All right, I'd like to call the Town and Plan Board Meeting to order at 6:00 PM on May 16, 2024. All stand for the play.
The United States of America and the republic for which it stands on one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we don't need an alternate. Did everybody get a chance to prepare any minutes for May 2nd?
Yep, I'm going to make a motion. Make a motion to accept the minutes from May 2nd as written.
All seconded, all opposed? All right. All right, I'll start with old business Grammy Rose, 1542 Route 109, Tax Math 233, Lot 004, application for additional use of a food truck trailer.
Hi, Tiffany Riley. It was here May 2nd. We reviewed the application for use of a food truck at Grammy Rose. From my understanding at the end of that meeting that the board was going to look over the pre-existing site plan and determine what direction to go in regards to approval or not approval of any conditions.
So Chris, we have the site plan, but doesn't, the site plan doesn't show any conditions on it. The conditions are stated in the findings and facts. That was produced by, actually North Star, when the approval went through. So the other conditions were in there. So the site plan just shows you just the site. It does exactly what it says.
Okay.
So on the second page of the findings and facts is where you're actually getting the conditions. Did you come up with, I know you had another gentleman came in. Did you guys figure out what hours that they wanted to do? They, you know, you had talked about, you wanted to just do it when it was opening, when just the dogs sanctuary was open, but then it was like, well, don't let me sell.
Yeah, in order to allow some sort of flexibility depending on whatever event is there, the food truck would operate within the hours of operation at Grammy Rose, which is 9:00 AM until 8:00 PM in the evening. Doesn't mean that the food truck would always operate during that time, but would at least like the flexibility to be able to do so.
The ice cream stand is open till 10?
So we have again, you have the, it says mini, so Grammy Rose is open at 9:00 AM.
Right.
But the ice cream doesn't open till 11:00 AM, but that is open till 10:00 PM.
So eight to 10?
Yeah, I would suggest making it the same hours, just in case.
Yeah, I have to look through this and I, you know, I think it's, the food truck comports with what was proposed and approved. Where they plan on putting it maintains the lanes and the turnarounds and the safety for pedestrians. So I'm personally back in the RFP, right? The ice cream shop from 11 to 10. So my opinion is it is something that could be minor and reflected on the, I'm not sure how administratively you do that.
I'll just amend.
You're reflecting some of that.
I'll amend the conditions and that's because that's all the conditions are in the findings and facts. They're not in the on the site plan. So there's no need to put just one condition on the site plan and have it signed.
I think we should spell out the conditions to be added to this.
Well, we do want to.
Before we just go ahead and, well, right, let Jason do it himself because we are changing a document that the planning board signed.
Oh, I didn't want to do that.
Yeah, no, I think we're gonna get there, Gavin.
Well, just like for instance, we just talked about the hours, but I'm still unclear which hours you came up with because we, it sounds like we have three different sets of hours, now to five, 11 to 10, and nine to 11, or nine to 10.
I think we said 10 to 11, or 11 to 10.
But she was asking for nine to eight initially. So it seems like we should go nine to 10.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That, that's my understanding, what we were just talking about, to align the hours of food operation with Grammy Rose itself.
Okay, so that would be one condition, nine to 10. So we have to add a whole nother note because it doesn't, it's a third set of hours on this thing.
Yeah. That's one, then I think we want a condition that the truck does park where they anticipate.
Yeah, where do you see that in the?
Well, it's not in there now.
Well, where do you?
They showed us a picture. It's gonna be right in front of the.
If you look at the, the map, there's two locations that are identified. Both way towards the front of the property, close to Route 109, out of the way of traffic flow entering into the property.
You're thinking 66476 parking layout and design?
It would be right here, Gavin.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I remember that. I'm just talking about the body of the document, where we're gonna replace the verbiage. Either on the parking layout and design or.
Well, I think that would be a condition.
So you'd add a condition to the beginning as opposed to changing the findings and facts?
I would add a condition.
Okay.
Again, that's my opinion. I wouldn't listen to anybody else.
And do we want to come up with a number of food trucks?
I think it was just one.
I think it was one last night.
So we're just gonna go with one?
They only have room of one and we can't, when the fire, when I spoke with the fire chief, it was for one.
Okay, well, I like that.
I'm gonna stick with one.
Okay, just ask the fire department a question, so I'll probably each respond to that. Are you saying for one unit at a time, not, not one business?
One, one food truck.
Yeah, so it wouldn't always necessarily be How and Hunger. It could be anyone as long as.
Yeah, yeah, no, just one.
One unit, right, just wanna clarify that.
Right, we're gonna make it that way.
You were just looking for a plug, weren't you?
No. You gave the answer as a.
So we could make it all in one condition right after.
Yeah, it's just true.
Right after the second bullet. On the second page.
So the condition would be the setting of the hours, one food truck on premise at a time, and we're gonna designate the parking area?
Now, that's, that's the only thing I'd like to see on the plan. It would be on the actual map, is the area designated on there. Or we could try to spell it out in verbiage on the, in the conditions. That's what they'd like us to do, certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So how would you describe that? Parking spaces closest to 109 in front of the main building, fronting the main building?
Like on the left, on the left as you drive in. You say the tent space area in front of the building?
Yeah, we don't want it near the building, right? Here or right there.
Even how, I believe the buildings officially referred to is the welcome center maybe.
Okay.
Or between the welcome center and Route 109. Because I, I want to be clear that they're not on the right-hand side as you drive in, but.
So then the condition we would add to the list for consideration would be one food truck allowed on premise at a time, located between the welcome center and Route 109, with hours of operation from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
I would just add in the lot.
In the lot between.
In the parking lot.
On the left is driving.
In front of the welcome center.
Yeah.
Ten, it's a 10 lot space, so you can just say that. The other one to the right has a lot more, like three times more. Do you count 10?
The six, and one's a handicap over here, I think.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, and then on the other side?
There's a van there, so that looks like.
It's total 12.
12 parking spaces.
Do you want me, do you want to identify the lot with 12 spaces in front of?
Yeah, and that's clear.
In front of the welcome center between 109. Okay, let's try this. Can't get it hurt. One food truck on premises at a time located in the parking lot, 12-space parking lot between the welcome center and Route 109. Hours of operation would be between 9:00 AM and 10:00 PM.
You specified one food truck per.
One food truck on premises at a time. Located between, in the parking lot, the 12-space parking lot between the welcome center and Route 109.
Do we have anything about food trucks in there?
Not right now, not yet. I think that's something that you guys can hang this year. And even with that, kind of alliance, it's already, you're doing, serving food or prepared, I mean, ice cream, so it's really.
Yeah.
Right.
They have a second on that?
My second?
On a paper? All opposed?
Done?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you get that, dude?
Yep.
George, just read it back, I would want you to turn your turn to radio.
I don't mind changing.
Yeah.
So then you'll just have North Star do it?
Yeah, I'll ask them to just, if they can find this document, maybe they just update it for us with the actual conditions. And if they can't, they don't have it, so then I'll just, just take it out and, uh, signature.
Is this something where we have Chris sign?
No.
Because we're considering it minor.
They used to not even have Chris sign, like the chairman sign. They would just be, they would be those. They would then even issue permits, just say, yep, approved.
Yeah, we used to be part of anyone too.
I'm just saying, I just started doing, I just started doing that just last year.
All right, sounds good.
All right, next up, E and E Holdings Fairgrounds Variety Store, 631 Route 109, Tax Math 241 Lot 006-001.
Jason, do you have a slide? Will you get a chance to pull up the plan for us? Thank you. Ken Ramzel, I'm here with Mango Technics, representing two different applicants. And the last time we were here, we presented the Fairgrounds Variety Project, which will be located on the, I'm sorry, southern end of the two different lots that you're seeing. As presented, we are hoping to split Lot 6 into two different lots so that the Fairgrounds Variety Store can be on its own parcel and, which will be owned by E and E Holdings. Tonight, we're here to, we'll talk more about that project if you're interested. I have done a little bit of research. We've worked with North Star Planning and Jason to come up with a couple things on shared access, and we've gotten a little bit of input on some of the, maybe not waiver requests, but some of the information that we were hoping the board might be able to make an interpretation on moving forward. And you might remember those, there were four items that we talked about last time. So moving on to the commercial mall that we're proposing, that makes it sound really large, but it's an 8,000 square foot building. We're proposing four commercial units within it. The use of those units has not really been fleshed out yet. They're going to be commercial or retail use of some sort. We have assumed a retail use because that generates the most traffic in order to be conservative on our DOT paperwork and everything that we're working through with the state. It likely will go down because we are not expecting four retail units within that building, but again, we want it to be conservative there. So we're also proposing 61 spaces based on that retail use and the square footage of the building. Again, that is likely to decrease as we move forward with conversations with DOT. And the applicant will also be doing kind of an economic or market rate study on what uses might best serve the community. Putting in these units, I, we think that there is a need for them, places like, it could be a laundromat or a Dollar General, or it could be office space. He wants to make sure that he's offering up something that will actually succeed here. So he's in the process of working through that with another agency. So I just want to be transparent about that, and we'll have all of this hopefully figured out by the time we actually submit an application to you. So this development here will share an entrance with the Fairgrounds Variety Store, and that shared entrance will be directly across the street from 13th Street, most likely. Again, we have to have that conversation with DOT, and they'll ultimately determine where that's going to go. But they generally prefer that you're in a line, if you're gonna be close to an entrance across the street that already exists, they generally prefer that you're in alignment with it. So anyone coming out of 13th Street can just cut straight across 109 and go into the proposed development. North of this, we are proposing what we thought were tiny homes, or what I would consider tiny homes. They're 24 by 24. There are 11 units. Seven of them are on Lot 61, and four of them are actually proposed on the same parcel that this strip mall will be on. They, by definition in the ordinance, they are actually not tiny homes. Tiny homes are 400 square feet or less. So these will be single-family, single-unit homes, and again, there are 11 units. And we are proposing that they are, they're proposed as short-term rentals. So the idea would be for the landowner to rent them out on a weekly or nightly basis, maybe with, you know, a two-night or three-night minimum.
So are you proposing, you don't want me to ask a question? You're proposing this as a cluster subdivision, or are you proposing it as a campground, or how are you doing this? Because, well, there's, there's a little question here because cluster subdivisions aren't allowed in commercial A, nor are campgrounds.
Nope, so I think it most closely means probably like a condominium-style development. And we have run the net residential calcs that take into consideration the total land withholdings with wetlands, steep slopes, any flood zones, which we don't have any of, subtracted out of that. Then we're dividing that number by the minimum lot size enacted. I have it on the sheet, two acres? Is that correct? Yeah, two acres. Which gives us an allowable number of lots or units that is equal to 11. So that's the number of units that we have proposed. We would be accessing this from a different entrance, further up the hill or north of the shared entrance for the Variety Store and the strip mall. We're also proposing a gate at about halfway down the entrance road, just so that the, the area and the units are secure. We are proposing a pond in the center of the cul-de-sac and just individual driveways, kind of an aesthetic feel. And we're also proposing trails out into the back of the property, which really isn't going to have any development on it. It made the most sense for us to construct a shorter road and have the units be closer to Route 109. It's still actually a pretty long road for this size development. But as you can see, the back of the lot, which is 20 acres, is largely, is going to be largely undeveloped. The trails are just for recreational use. I, as far as utilities go, we'd likely be proposing two septic fields for the tiny homes themselves. One larger one for the 11 units, which will be kind of downhill from that portion of the development, and then a smaller one for the four units that are up hill or closer to Route 109. And we've run initial calculations. We're not required to do an engineered septic system or anything. They're just regular septic systems that are fairly large to accommodate the flows expected there. We will need an engineered septic system, most likely for the four-unit commercial building that's proposed to the south. In addition to that, there will be privately drilled wells, I'm sorry, they won't be, they won't be private. For the commercial, there'll be private wells for serving the tiny homes or single-family homes. And then we'll likely have a public transient well similar to the Fairgrounds Variety Store that I described a couple weeks ago. That well just serves, will likely serve too many patrons. So it's, I think it's 28 patrons in a time span of 60 days out of the year. And so we'll have a permit through the main drinking water program that'll be required. And I think that's monitored every six months or one year so that the water can be tested as you're serving it to the public. As far as stormwater goes, and feel free to interject with any questions as I keep going, but as far as stormwater goes, the Fairgrounds Variety Design is a little bit ahead of the rest of the development. We are proposing at this time one infiltration basin near where the proposed lot line will be, between the entrance and the road. So that cluster of three trees in that kind of, yeah, right there. So those trees might have to move a little bit closer to Route 109 within that 25-foot buffer that's required. But we're proposing an infiltration basin there, and then we're proposing two, a double-cell underdrain soil filter to the south of the development, kind of near the diesel station in that green space. Last time, we talked about the aquifer protection district, and I apologize that that line is not on these plans, but it will be on our design plans when we submit. Thank you. This again. Okay, yeah, so infiltration basin up here, and then underdrain soil filter here. It's just over two acres of impervious for this portion of the development, so. And generally, the water is, the stormwater is running in the existing condition down through here and over, and then down along Mills Road before it makes its way to Loon Pond, which is the watershed that this development is associated with. We also have, there's kind of a ridge in this area, so it kind of splits, and water also runs down this area, but it makes its way back over this way. So we have one study point kind of at the corner of this property that we'll be analyzing for stormwater. And of course, the goal is to make sure that peak rates of runoff in the proposed condition are at or below those experienced in the existing condition. And we also have requirements through DEP to provide treatment, not only detention, but treatment, which we are achieving with the infiltration basin and underdrain soil filter. The aquifer protection zone, if I remember correctly, runs like right along here, along this corner, and goes down that way. This is not part of the aquifer protection district. And so we'll make sure that our underdrain soil filter is also outside of that zone as it should be. And that also requires setbacks that are being met. The pumps for the gas station are also outside of that zone as it is not allowed to use in an aquifer protection zone. I think there might have been a little bit of misunderstanding last time about the Malsum Lake watershed. I guess, so it depends on how much you're breaking up watersheds. So Loon Pond, this is technically within the watershed of Loon Pond, but it, Loon Pond drains to the Malsum Water, the Malsum Lake. So, or not the Malsum Lake, Malsum Lake. And so when you have, as far as phosphorus or nitrogen are concerned, which DEP regulates, Malsum Lake is most at risk for those things. However, Loon Pond is not. So when you have a site that drains to a pond, which then drains to a most at-risk pond, you do not have to meet the phosphorus standards because all of the phosphorus and nitrogen will have theoretically filtered out in Loon Pond before entering Malsum Lake. And before that, they've gone through all the treatment measures that are required on-site. So I just wanted to clarify that if anyone had any questions about it.
Not sure I follow. Could you run that for me again?
Sure.
So, so the phosphorus that goes into Loon and then potentially down to Malsum, it doesn't matter?
No, it certainly, it certainly does matter. I'm saying that when you have a site that, if you have a site that drains directly to the Malsum Lake watershed, you would have to comply with the phosphorus standard that is imposed by DEP. What we have here is a site that's draining to Loon Pond, which then drains to the Malsum. So we are not required to complete phosphorus calculations. However, we are proposing treatment BMPs that remove phosphorus on-site. We just don't have to complete the calculations to prove that it's being removed at a certain rate because of its, because of its initial destination.
Just to be clear, the board does that on purpose, they ask you to do phosphorus calculations for any sort of cluster subdivision? So it's likely we will be doing those.
I can look through the standards on that. We're not proposing a cluster subdivision.
Well, can you spoken or talk again, Jason? So each one of those units is gonna have a separate well?
Um, no. They will likely, there will likely be two or three wells that serve multiple units.
All right, well, it's difficult because we're not really supposed to discuss it too much. I don't want to start digging into anything that I'm not supposed to dig into here, but there looks like a cluster subdivision to me.
Well.
Though we're gonna need to break out the lots, and there's a lot more to a cluster subdivision than that. It's designed sort of like a campground, but I'm not sure that is a campground.
Yeah, I don't think that what we're proposing falls under the definition of a campground, and a cluster lot subdivision has individual lots. So the reason that this is, well, the reason that it's going into subdivision is because number one, Lot 61 is part of an existing subdivision. So anything that we do to it as far as adding units or lots. we have to amend the subdivision plan. And I'm kind of working through this still, because there's a lot going on with DOT and entrances and land frontage. And we're meeting with them on May 30th. So the next time we come to you, there should be a much clearer, and I realize that probably causing confusion. I'm just trying to be transparent as we move through the process, but. So, once we meet with them, we'll know more. The idea would be that instead of going through an amended subdivision process for Lot 6-1, and then going through a new, getting a new subdivision permit for the four units on this lot by itself, the idea would be to amend the subdivision that already exists and make this all one parcel. That, to me, is the cleanest way to do this. It's just a subdivision amendment. We're changing the lot line, and we're adding land to an existing lot. Back to the cluster subdivision, we aren't proposing each of these on their own lot. So they wouldn't have to meet a minimum lot size associated with a cluster lot subdivision. We are allowed 11 units, and you can, you can put those 11 units where you want and have the remaining land on that parcel be open, open area that's owned by an association. The units themselves will likely be condo, will likely have to put together a condo plat plan. So like you would have, if you had a multifamily unit, and maybe, Jamal, you could speak to this, but if you had like a, an apartment building, or several duplexes that you were, that you were proposing, your subdivision plan would actually be, the lot would be common open space, and then your units themselves would have little boxes around just the structures. And those, that would be a condo plat plan. So does that, does that make sense?
I'm just trying to define the project in terms of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Because I feel like where we're talking about condos, we would be more likely looking at one building, not 11. It's not necessarily so, but that's just one, one thing I thought of.
So you can have single-family, single-unit condos that, I mean, the.
And they're all going to be under the same ownership, is that the?
Yes.
So you're calling it a rentable condo?
Yeah. Units for lease or rent.
Yeah, at first glance, it looks like a planned unit development to me.
Yeah.
Given that. But not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't classify it as cluster.
Yeah. It's difficult, too, with the planned unit development, because I, that's something we talked about as well.
Yeah, it's something I'm interested in hearing about.
Yeah, there are some complexities to that, because it's defined in the ordinance, but the only time it's mentioned in the ordinance is the definition. So there are no other criteria within your ordinance that, that further describes or change the nature of the development if it's considered a planned unit development. And so.
I'm pretty sure it's in the land use chapter.
It's in the land use chapter.
Yeah. There's no like performance.
Yeah, there's no standards.
Right, there's no other process or formal standards associated with it. So, so it's like, we can call it that, but what, what is that really? And we can, but what is that really achieving?
Well, I think we would be viewing this as one project, as opposed to three separate projects, or whoever you're going to be presenting it to us. Because under a planned unit development, land under unified management. So it can't have multiple owners. It's under unified management. So if you have the same guy plowing the whole thing, I mean, the same stormwater system for the whole thing, I do think this is a planned unit development. And it should be presented to the board as such. But I'm still trying to pin down the actual uses that are going to be occurring within the planned unit development.
Sure, so that would be residential and commercial.
Pass a question? So it's an existing subdivision, the parent lot?
This, this lot, yeah.
This wasn't a subdivision.
Correct.
The bottom one, this was chipped off of another, of a 48-foot parcel last year.
Right.
So they did a property line adjustment, it remained another lot.
And it's part of one now?
Yes.
And it's, it's, well, it's part of, yeah, it's part of Willard Farm Estates.
Is it sort of, any sort of dedicated open space, or?
They're not like, no, they're not, they're not, I'd have to go back in the plan.
Yeah, because they were, there wasn't, because it wasn't clustered. It was, the minimum was two acres, and they're both.
Forty acres, they're all four-acre parcels.
Yeah.
And then, so would you be proposing a new, separate subdivision?
So that's what I'm trying to avoid, because the, right now, these four units are shown on this lot. And once you're over two units, it's subdivision.
Right.
So in order to avoid, for me, it's not about the paperwork, but it's just, it's, you know, we can do that. But in order to avoid having a separate subdivision for this, a site plan review for this, and then an amended subdivision separately for this, my thought was combine these two lots under a subdivision amendment for this.
So it would be tied to the existing one?
Correct.
And for the future?
And it would still, and of course, this portion of the development is still going to require a site plan review, but it just simplifies it, because it doesn't require two different subdivision permits.
Is there any reason why the, the commercial unit couldn't be its own lot? Or?
Yes, because the lot calculation to get to 11 allowable units includes all of this land.
And that calculation you're using is the same calculation you would use for a cluster subdivision?
It is, yes, it's a net residential. Well, that, that doesn't really matter, because it, cluster subdivision, regular subdivision, condo unit development, it is all, that is all, it all stems from the allowable number of units, which is your net residential density calculation. You have to do it when you are doing any sort of subdivision. Your, your allowable number of lots does not change when you are proposing a cluster lot subdivision.
It's just the design.
Right. It is always, the number of allowable lots is, is taken from the amount of land you have. The natural resources on that land, or steep slopes or unbuildable land, is subtracted. And then you're divided by your minimum lot size in the base zone, which is two acres. That never changes.
Right. We also have things like road frontage to consider.
Yes.
With all these units, they, none of them have the 250 feet of road frontage. They are allowed to reduce that to a cluster subdivision, but you're not looking to do a cluster subdivision.
Correct.
So I am curious about the road frontage.
So it's all one parcel? So your road frontage remains as what it currently is for the, what I would call the mother parcel, or the subject parcel. You don't, you're not required to have road frontage for a condo-style.
And if you combine it, it'll be longer anyway, right?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, if you combine it on a little.
I don't know if that's true. All right, well, I think we might be getting a little bit further than we're supposed to in the conversation. Anybody have any other directions on this?
I have a question about the lot line between the two commercial uses.
At the bottom, sort of?
Yeah, I heard down, Jason.
Oh, Jason?
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like it'd be cleaner to have the entrance located on, instead of it being split?
Yeah.
For like, future?
Yeah, Jason, Jason had told me that you, you provided some feedback.
Oh, okay.
Earlier, and so, I'm sorry, I had, I submitted this on Friday, so, last Friday. So we will move this lot line, this lot will become a little bit smaller. And this entrance, because we want to keep that alignment with 13th Street, will actually be fully on this property, which will probably, I think that will make things a little bit cleaner as well, as far as paperwork goes. But there, of course, will be a shared access and maintenance agreement between this landowner and this landowner. And as I mentioned, when, when we put in our application, there will be a purchase and sale agreement between the two entities describing what portion of land will be with E&amp;E Holdings, and what portion of land will be with H, H.A. Mays, Inc.
And you're going to work with DOT on the entrances? Because I think we only, actually only allows one, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was something that we had asked about last time. We talked about for this, for, so when we started all of this, Mays, I call it Mays Mall, it will not be called that. The strip mall here wasn't really, we hadn't, like, we didn't have plans for it yet. We didn't know what was going to be happening there yet. And, and the tiny homes kind of came after the fact as well. So we were just looking at the Fairgrounds Variety Store. And when we originally went to DOT with this, we had an entrance here and an entrance in this area, actually closer to where the existing entrance is for Bob's Bagels. And so when we brought this to them, they had the same comment. It was, you know, you have to provide, you can only provide access from the less-traveled way, which would be Milton Mills Road. And they weren't going to allow an access off of Route 109. But then when it came to light that there was going to be, this lot was going to be split, and there was going to be a development here, well, that changes things, because now it's considered access management with DOT. They're going to have an entrance here off of Route 109 regardless. So you, so then they have to look at the project as a whole, because it's.
For trips?
It's shared, yeah, for number of trips, for site distance, for, there's a whole slew of different things. They do a bunch of traffic counts out on the road.
So it'll be one permit?
One permit, yeah, a TMP is required.
For, for all the, for everything on that plan? Or just?
I will, yes, we're, well, we're talking with them on May 30th, so we should, we should, I believe that they will also view the tiny homes development as part of this. But that's, as far as trip generation, the tiny homes development is so, the number of trips is so much fewer than what will be generated. Actually, the big generator is the drive-through.
Yeah, it's usually triggered TMP, like.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the drive-through alone puts, put us somewhere at like 250 trips in the peak hour, which I talked about last time, is, I mean, it's, it's all based off of a model. And of course, in urban areas where you have a lot more people, that number is going to be much higher than it's going to be in active name. But, so if DOT does take that into consideration, you know, the, the character of where this is going to be. But the data says we're at about 250 trips, just from the Fairgrounds Variety Store.
Just to stick with what you were saying about the lot line for a second, because I did voice my concern the other day that the southern lot would have three entrances on it. And that, that wasn't really what we were looking for.
When you say three entrances, can you explain what you mean?
Well, once you move the southern lot line, or even if you don't move it, the proposed lot line, once you move to the south, however much it is, you're going to have two on the top of the screen and one on Milton Mills Road. That's three entrances. I'm just putting it out there, I mean, you can't have three entrances.
That's, well, in my opinion, your entrance comes from where your frontage is, which would be off of Route 109 or off of Milton Mills Road. I would not, even if this came in further, I would not consider this an entrance to the site and a separate entrance to the site. I would call this one shared entrance.
But it's on a different lot, so that's, that's where we're.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, well, I'm just putting it out there. And the other issue was the, you know, maintaining those buffers. When you have the lot line, you need that vegetated buffer there. It can't be all paved.
So we did look into that, and this lot is required to have a 25-foot buffer only because we are over the, we are over the 30% impervious coverage for the lot as it's calculated with the lot line where it is. And so you can do that. There is a provision in the ordinance that you can increase to 50% lot coverage if you increase your building setbacks from 50 to 100. So that's why we've shown 100-foot building setbacks on the lot. The building is not within those, the buildings are not within those. And that is actually what imposes the 25-foot vegetated buffer. So on this lot, we only have 50-foot setbacks for side setbacks, so we actually don't, we're not asking for larger setbacks or greater coverage. So we don't have a 25-foot buffer on that side. It still stands true that we will plant, we're happy to create a vegetated buffer on the sides of the road if screening is preferred by the board.
Well, I would like to point out that you are going to need to be at the 30% at a maximum on your new lots, in your commercial district, that we're not going to be allowing that, because you're in the Aquifer Protection District.
This is not within the Aquifer Protection District at all, the development?
Well, once you put it on the map, we can have that discussion.
Okay.
So I think that's about all we can do on this for tonight.
Did you guys talk about the drive-through and the residential lot?
We did briefly with the, we need to come up with the definition of the word adjacent. It's not a difficult definition, but we can't really get any further than that until we have an application in front of us.
Okay.
You know, drive-through is not allowed adjacent rural area of rural use.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if you wanted feedback on that.
Well, we, we did as much as we could.
You did. Honestly.
Yeah, I think, well, when I talked to Jason, had you suggested doing a measurement from the, the residence on the abutting lot to this building where the drive-through will be?
Yeah, I mean, that's a really weird, like.
It's so vague.
That's one way to do it, to show how far it is.
Yeah, and what, what, what we had talked about last time was, that specific standard references noise. And the only noise coming from this is going to be the operating sys, I, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on what this is called, the microphone for the order board. And so what I had said was that a 25-foot buffer is required along here as far as vegetation. Right now, as we're showing it, it's 150 feet from this lot line to this, the edge of the drive aisle. I had also said last time that, right now, we're showing the order board very close to the building. We could slide it back a little bit, so that it's here. I do have to pay attention to queuing and how that might affect the cars where they're stopping to order, and how that's going to back up things if you have multiple cars in line. So I can't shift it too far back, but we might be able to shift it, let's say, 175 feet away from the property line. But again, it reads adjacent. I mean, I would argue, we're, we're proposing a buffer that is much greater than what's required. I think that could be beneficial for noise. We can move the, the order board a little bit further away, and hopefully that's satisfactory.
Yeah, I think just providing as much as you can in the submission will be helpful.
Yeah, certainly. We can, we'll, we'll definitely address all of that, section by section, when we, when we submit the application. But, yeah, we just wanted to workshop this with the board, so that you're not, you know, you don't get a big book set in front of you and have no context. That was the goal here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask if there was anyone in the audience who wanted to share any comments or reflections on this at this time, before we move to the next subject? Is that fine with you, Chris?
Yeah, it's a vague guess.
Well, there may be someone in the audience who wishes to speak on the subject, and if I permit them to do so, they can do it. But if you say no, I don't want to do that, then.
Oh, we'll hear him for now.
If there, if there is anyone.
Yeah, we can hear.
He's asking us to run a lot of public comments, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, yeah, I'll add.
Sure. Please speak with me.
Yeah, my name is Jacob Johnson. And I'll just add something to, just, I basically just to be back off the adjacent comment. Just since it's vague, I kind of interpret it as adjacent lots, lot next to another lot, you know? And so regardless of how far away the gentleman's home is on his lot, that is immediately adjacent to the proposed development here, it limits, anything, anything that goes there may limit his ability to utilize his land in the future, you know, or, you know, prevent him from doing so. So just something else for the board to consider in that regard. Yeah, and then I would just encourage the board to seriously consider Loon Pond, Loon Pond's runoff into the Malsum Valley watershed significantly as it looks at the implementation of gas stations and those types of things, trying to protect total water points. That's what I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think by definition, not.
Think by definition, I don't know the exact definition of adjacent, but abutting is neighboring lots. Adjacent is referring to something that is near or close to.
Okay.
Just saying.
Anyone else?
All right, what's next?
New business?
Okay, I'll send.
Hey, business, AJ. Do you want to rebut on that?
No, we don't have to do that.
Yes, you do.
Well, but comment. We, there's no conversation.
But an applicant has an opportunity to. Yes.
It's just a statement, there's no conversation.
Um, I, I mean, I, I still feel what I said before is valid. There's no definition of adjacent in the zoning ordinance. So I think it's something that is, is probably going to have to be decided upon by the board once, is that, I mean, is that accurate?
Yeah. I think, you know, sketch plan is to provide general feedback and once there's an application in front, then we can get, get really into it.
Yeah.
No, it's not too difficult.
No, it's fine. I mean, as, from our perspective, we, we did get some feedback last time and I think as proposed, we are meeting the majority of the standards or all of the standards that we have clear, clear, that we have had clarified. And so, yeah, it'll just kind of come down to those interpretations. And the one, one thing I didn't get to talk about, we talked about it last time, was just that there is a very large, the length required for parking stalls in your ordinance is 24 feet, which is the entire width of a typical drive aisle. So a typical parking stall is nine by 18. We drew these at nine by 20 and we will be asking for a waiver just from the length of the parking stall that's required within your performance standards. Just, it's really an effort to reduce the amount of impervious that we're proposing onsite, in our opinion. There's no need for a 24-foot parking space, but we will cross that bridge when we come to it. And then as far as Loon Pond goes, we have to meet the general standard for stormwater treatment. And when you are meeting the stormwater, the general standard for stormwater treatment, it's, it is treating 95% of impervious that we're proposing and 80% of developed area that we're proposing. And when you are not within a severely blooming lake watershed, which Moussum Lake is not, you are therefore meeting the phosphorus standard under DEP's, under DEP's rules. So we have, we will be proposing three to four stormwater treatment BMPs for the project. So we'll provide all of that information, of course, in the stormwater report. That's all I have.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, I've been advised that we gave too much advice last time and I would like to move on.
Thank you.